7:00 PM, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to say welcome to our town of Spring City, Board of Commissioners Commissioned meeting. Roll call please.
Commissioner Bieber.
Present.
Commissioner Jenkins.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
Present.
Vice Mayor Bauer.
Present.
Mayor Law.
Here. This time I'd like to stand with me as we go through the board of fire and I quit to be all of us. Most gracious and holy heavens, Father, that in this day you allowed us to call on thy holy name for a blessing. Father, Lord, we ask you to bless each and every one that is represented here, bow down under the sound of my weak voice. Father, we ask you to tend us to need and know what to pray for and how to pray for it. Father, we ask you to bless our city. Father, we ask you to bless our city employees, our city government. Father, we ask you to bless our police officers, our firefighters, and all those that put themselves in first response and line of duty. Father, we ask you to remember our military service, and they're out there protecting the land of the free and its knowledge, the United States of America, which we're part of. Father, we ask you to bless those that may be having family near or sudden from the illness. We ask you to be the doctors and nurses touching them where they be well, participate, be active, be back with the family. Father, also, we ask you to bow down and remember those who've lost loved ones in bereavement this time. We ask you to touch their souls and their heart, or let somebody be honored enough to go by, and lend their ear and their shoulder to cry on them, to add peace and joy. Father, we can't wait to go through this monthly business meeting here for the town of Spring City. Father, we ask you to clear our minds and hearts to work. All deeds should be done justifiable and die silent. Father, we know in all minds won't be in agreeable, but we ask you to be the judge and jury for us, so we execute things best for our ability that I can. Father, we ask you to bless and bless our son Jesus' name, amen. Friends of the United States of America, and due to the brotherly, for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Uh, before we get way up into our agenda, this time I'd like to take an opportunity to introduce to you all that are here present to our new city manager, Mr. Thomas McCarthy.
Hello.
Hello.
This is his first week. As in past when we have met and discussed this move, I'd ask those that were in attendance, and I ask that of those that are using attendance. We don't want to run him off, so we'd like to give him at least four weeks to get his feet wet, know the town. Uh, one of the things that I have been told right off the gate, Monday morning, he comes to town, went to McDonald's, went to Rocky Top. The manager of Rocky Top come and says, you know something? I've been managing the store here for three years, and I have not actually met the city manager of Spring City. He said, but first day on the job, who's I meet? City manager, I like him. So, uh, he was welcomed by our, our town of some people just arriving to have breakfast, where he and I crossed paths at. So, without any further ado, we're going to try to get on with amongst the business meeting, part of our statute we have in front of us. Number three is approval for the August seventh, twenty twenty-five regular commission meeting minutes.
I didn't think I loaded for it, so I ain't saying that I did. I didn't write it down. I probably wrote it down.
You didn't. You didn't vote for it.
I did not. I voted no, you're right. That's why I I, I'm glad you were around. I thought I did, but, and I, I think I wrote it down, but I just don't have it picked up. Uh, second to each. Don't even have me on there. I might not have been on.
And you came in late.
You come in.
But I was there for that one. I thought, maybe I wasn't. But I guess I come in on the one with the dirt sediment over there. Maybe I read it coming down the road trying to get here, driving along there. Sorry. You gotta change it, because I ain't on it.
He made it seven forty-five.
Yeah. Pretty sure that was right after that. Because I, I wasn't on the one. I thought I was on the one for P P Partners too, but I was not. I didn't pick up to the one with the removal of dirt sediment from the firing area.
I made a motion that we approved the, uh, August seventh, twenty twenty-five, special commissioners meeting.
I'll second it.
Okay, we had been made a motion by Commissioner Murphy, seconded by Vice Mayor Bauer, to approve the August seventh, twenty twenty-five Spring City Regular City Commission meeting. Question? Roll call please.
Commissioner Bieber.
Aye.
Commissioner Jenkins.
Aye.
Commissioner Murphy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bauer.
Aye.
Mayor Law.
Aye. Next thing on the agenda is approval of the August fifteenth, twenty twenty-five special call meeting minutes. The vote for the special call being
She's thinking it.
That was the one where we talked. Motion higher.
Second.
Yeah. Yeah, we called it. We talked that, that the, the day acts, or the day of, later on in the day. We talked, I remember we made a talk today.
I make motion that we approve the, uh, August twentieth, twenty twenty-five special call meeting.
Good thing.
Oh, August. Oh, I'm sorry, August seventeenth.
I second. Okay, we had a motion made by Commissioner Murphy, seconded by Commissioner Jenkins to approve the August fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, three PM special call mission meeting minutes. Question? Roll call please.
Commissioner Bieber.
Aye.
Commissioner Jenkins.
Uh.
Commissioner Murphy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bauer.
Aye.
Mayor Law.
Aye. Next thing on the agenda is motion invoked concerning the interim city managers pay for Brenda Dotson. At last, discussion we had at our workshop, uh, discussion was made that we would extend it six weeks due to the transition of her still going to be pulling double duty as an aide, assistant, and new city manager, and get comfortable and used to and familiar and the pros and cons. Uh, he's walked into a hornet's nest of emails and first one kind of another, so it's going to tie up some of her time to still juggle a mental mess, but still be involved in, in this transition. So, uh, any other discussion about it?
Do we not also discuss, um, kind of twenty-five dollars a day? For it's a day, more than extra, instead of fifty dollars a day? It's already due. It was seventy-five. Okay. I thought that. Never mind. Okay. I knew you didn't ask. Was it? I thought.
Mayor Law. Can I imagine that we continue the interim city manager, uh, pay for Brenda Dotson, uh, Dotson for, uh, pay, uh, yeah, extended time of six weeks?
Okay, we've been had made a motion that by Commissioner Murphy, seconded by Vice Mayor Bauer, that we continue the internship pay for city manager toward Brenda Dotson for an additional six weeks at the present salary that was set in our first vote. Would there be any discussion moving forward? None? Roll call please.
Commissioner Bieber.
Aye.
Commissioner Jenkins.
Uh.
Commissioner Murphy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bauer.
Aye.
Mayor Law.
Aye. Second thing on the agenda, well, six things. Motion invoked concerning resolution number twenty twenty-five dash oh nine, a resolution authorized to participate in the property camp conservation match grant program through the P P Partners. Uh, resolution authorized on twenty twenty-five dash oh nine, may participate in to participate in the property conservation match grant program, whereas the citizens of the town of Spring City have entrusted this administration with the care and custody of the city-owned property, and whereas all efforts shall be made to protect city-owned properties from various bills that may arise for the town of Spring City, and whereas public entity partners seek to encourage members of the with, encourage members with property covered to develop and implement to the property conservation program by offering the property conservation match grant program, and whereas the town of Spring City is now seeking to participate in this important program. Therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and board of commissioners of the town of Spring City. Section one, the town of Spring City hereby authorizes Smith application for the property conservation match grant program that through the loss control department of public entity partners. Section two, that the town of Spring City is further authorized to provide a matching sum for any money provided by this grant.
What was this bargain? That's for the that's for the cameras. Oh, cameras. We'll submit, we've received this grant, we're returning your states for that to get, um,
Reversion.
Reverse vote. It's not reverse, it's for the whole product, the whole process, but it will never happen. I was looking at my notes.
Ready for motion?
Aye.
Make a motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh nine, a resolution authorizing us to participate in the property conservation matching grant program through the P P Partners.
Second. They read a motion made by Vice Mayor Bauer, seconded by Commissioner Jenkins to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh nine, a resolution authorized to participate in the property conservation matching grant program through the P P Partners. Discussion. Here none, seen none. Roll call please.
Commissioner Bieber.
Aye.
Commissioner Jenkins.
Uh.
Commissioner, Commissioner Murphy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bauer.
Aye.
Mayor Law.
Aye. Next thing is motion invoked concerning the Halloween.
Mayor, we also need to put the street closures that's provided by
Uh, our Halloween event this year is going to be on Halloween, which is going to be Friday. Uh, our police department has securely come up with a exterior idea of street closures. Uh, on the street closures will be going from east to west. It'd be Wes Jackson closed to sixty-eight, Piccadilly closed to sixty-eight, McGoffin Cemetery, Neal, Pierce, Front Street, North Ray, North Jackson, Needle. What this does, it frees up all Front Street, and everything is going to be from this direction, that way. Uh, I don't know how many come to town, participates or even, even has a clue. It's amazing to see what this, this draws, and the, our police department, along with our body department has come up with an ideal to make it much safer due to the migration of trick-or-treaters coming to the south side of town as well as what's already been carved around on. So, to make it more safe for our trick-or-treaters and, uh, make some concerned citizens on this side say, oh, okay, y'all done it over, why not, or we just wait two? We get good. So, uh, it will be blocked off starting at, uh, what time, Rock?
Uh, six o'clock. Five thirty, five thirty is open.
Five thirty. So, it'll start at five thirty. I've asked that we get this out, communicated through our, our city, our community, and our business, to let them know.
Hey, yes, safety.
Sorry. This is going to be for October thirty-first, which is Halloween. That gives us two months. Uh, I'm gonna pay you a prior notification. I hate social media, fashion, uh, and all that other stuff, but, you know, let's get the word out to people, let them know what's getting ready to transpire that way. We don't get a blue million phone calls and cursing one end and the other, but nobody let me know.
Mayor, what time are we going to wrap up?
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock.
About thirty-nine.
About thirty-nine. Thank you.
Mayor Russell. Oh, also it's covering Flint on this side. Um, Valley. Oh, Thursday. Thursday. Church, we, uh, away both ends, the nexus to pizza week is over. Gotcha. Yes, sir.
I'm making a motion that, uh, on the Halloween event will be booked for the five thirty, five thirty PM to nine DM, uh, Friday, August, or October thirty-third, twenty twenty-five. Approving the street closure.
Okay, we had a motion by Commissioner Jenkins and, uh, seconded by Commissioner Murphy, that we approve the street closures for the Halloween trick-or-treaters, which will be on October thirty-first, Friday, from five thirty PM to nine o'clock PM. Any other questions, discussion? Roll call please.
Commissioner Bieber.
Aye.
Commissioner Bieber.
Uh.
Commissioner Murphy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bauer.
Aye.
Mayor Law.
Aye. Next thing is, uh, motion invoked concerning Denny's Long, Denny Long Street to the Spring City Park Board.
Make a motion that we approve Denny Long Street to the Spring City Park Board.
Okay, we had a motion by Commissioner Jenkins, seconded by Commissioner Murphy, to approve the vote concerning Denny Long Street will be added to the Spring City Park. Any other question, discussion? Here none, seen none. Roll call please.
Commissioner Bieber.
Aye.
Commissioner Jenkins.
Uh.
Commissioner Murphy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bauer.
Aye.
Mayor Law.
Aye. Next thing is motion concerned on Alma Marquetti and Sean O'Neill, second, uh, Sean O'Neill for the second term on the library vote.
Make a motion that we, uh, proceed with Alma Marquette and Sean O'Neill on the second term of library vote.
I'll second it.
There we had a motion by Commissioner Jenkins, seconded by Vice Mayor Bauer, to approve the vote to go forward with adding Alma Marquetti and Sean O'Neill for a second term on the Spring City Library. Any other discussion, question? Here none, seen none. Roll call please.
Commissioner Bieber.
Aye.
Commissioner Jenkins.
Uh.
Commissioner Murphy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bauer.
Aye.
Mayor Law.
Aye. Next item on the agenda is motion invoked concerning new, new member Chris Anderson to the library vote.
Make a vote, a motion that we add Chris Anderson to the library.
I'll second it.
Okay. Had a motion by Commissioner Jenkins, seconded by Vice Mayor Bauer, that we add Chris Anderson to the library. Question, discussion?
Would you like to meet? Chris. Stand up, Mrs. Chris Anderson.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Bauer. Sorry, Commissioner Bieber.
Aye.
Commissioner Jenkins.
Uh.
Commissioner Murphy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bauer.
All, aye.
Mayor Law.
Aye. Uh, next thing on the agenda is motion vote concerning bids received by, on the painting of the exterior of the Audrey Pack Library. Uh, those that intended it in the, uh, workshop, uh, they give us two votes. They do have funding in their budget to take care of this. Uh, we as a board of commissioners always want to be very supportive of our library, the decisions they make. This is set aside any budget, uh, and, uh, they pick who they want. Uh.
Silk.
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 Yeah.
Any other questions, discussion?
Make a motion that we use whoever they, uh, want to paint the exterior of the Audrey Pack Library.
Can we add a cost for this? Self-solutions?
Yes.
Does he ill pay?
Eighty-nine twenty-five, Brenda.
Eighty-nine, yeah.
Yeah, eighty-nine twenty-five, Brenda. Yeah, self-solutions, eighty-nine twenty-five. I had it all along, I was going to hear about it.
I'll second it.
Okay, we had a motion by Commissioner Jenkins, seconded by Vice Mayor Bauer, to proceed with the painting of the exterior of the Audrey Pack Library for a price of eighty-nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. Twenty-five.
Eighty-nine twenty.
Any more question and discussion on this? Here none, seen none. Roll call please.
Commissioner Bieber.
Aye.
Commissioner Jenkins.
Uh.
Commissioner Murphy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bauer.
Aye.
Mayor Law.
Aye. Next item is motion invoked concerning renewal of C D at Southeast Bank.
Make a motion that we renew the, uh, C D if it's, we're doing the twelve month, right?
Yes.
Twelve month C D at Southeast Bank.
Okay, we had a motion by Commissioner Jenkins, seconded by Commissioner Murphy, to proceed forward with the, uh, renewal of C D at Southeast Bank for a term of twelve months. Any other discussion, question about it? Roll call please.
Commissioner Bieber.
Aye.
Commissioner Jenkins.
Uh.
Commissioner Murphy. Vice Mayor Bauer.
Aye.
Mayor Law.
Aye. Next thing is motion vote on the M O U for Tecto's Home Grant and approve with Cindy, uh, approval of Cindy Wilk, Wilkie and Angela Knox to be trainers for the program.
Did we get another one yet? I make, I read the motion, sir. I make a motion, um, that we approve the M O U for Tecto's Home Grant and through approval of Cindy Wilkie and Angela Knox to be trainers for the program.
Awesome. I, I'll second.
Okay, we had a motion by Vice Mayor Bauer, seconded by Commissioner Jenkins on the vote of the M O U for Tecto's Home Grant and approval of Cindy Wilkie and Angela Knox to be the trainers of this program. Any other question, question about it? Here none, roll call please.
Commissioner Bieber.
Aye.
Commissioner Jenkins.
Uh.
Commissioner Murphy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bauer.
Aye.
Mayor Law.
Aye. Next thing is motion invoked to apply for the rise grant, rise planning grant opportunity. This is
Want to say anything?
Uh.
This is the grant to have the tires put in place.
This is the one where we only get a certain amount. They might, they make it for, or we can work with whatever.
Land for public, terrestrial public land.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't, you know, we don't cost. Yeah, we don't, you know, we don't cost this. So, I, I'll make a motion, we, uh, move forward with the rise planning grant opportunity.
Okay, Ben made a motion to vote to apply for the rise grant, uh, planning grant opportunity. And seconded by Vice Mayor, uh, Commissioner Murphy. Any other discussion, question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bieber?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins?
Uh.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bauer?
Aye.
Mayor Law?
Aye. Uh. We have another one.
We have one other. Uh, in your packet, there is, I did not read these until after the agendas, it went out. Resolution number twenty-two-five dash ten, it's a free application for the Town of Spring City Recreational Trails, Cumberland Trails Connector Project Phase One, twenty-two-five Appalachian Regional Commission Project. And I'll let the mayor go ahead and read that.
Resolution number twenty-two-five dash ten, resolution that participates for the Town of Spring City Recreation Trail, Cumberland Trails Connector Project, Phase One, twenty-two-five Appalachian Region Commission Project. Whereas the Town of Spring City wishes to build trails for recreational purposes, and wish to connect the town with the Cumberland Trails. Whereas the Appalachian Region Commission has granted funds available for this purpose. Be it therefore resolved by the Town of Spring City Commissioners that the mayor is authorized to submit an application for up to one million dollars for a ARC funding hereby commitment, A R C funds, and hereby commits to the eight-hundred-sixty-nine-thousand matching grant funds, as were required by the grant and other local cash through the funding of L W C L and C B D G grants. Be it further resolved that the mayor is authorized to enter in, enter into an agreement necessary for successful reward of grants subject to the approval by the funds, funding source. Now, therefore, be, therefore, if it is said, the A R C application is applied, approved, the mayor is hereby authorized to accept on behalf of the Town of Spring, on behalf of Spring City, execute any and all documents entered into the agreement necessary for the successful application and award of the grant and to enter into a project administration agreement with the Southeast Tennessee Development District, subject to be approved by the funded resource.
Well, the way I'm reading it, it ain't, this is no cop.
Okay, there's an, an email.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kinda.
Okay. So, the first resolution that we passed did not have the numbers in it. You go to the very bottom of this page, and you read this from state, and Brenda, did y'all pass this at your September board? A commissioners meeting, I know it is like notice, but the state is asking for the resolution to have the exact dollar amount. I think the previous one just only was just large twenty percent. So then I replied back, and I said, Sam, we will add this to our agenda for Thursday evening. I do have a couple of questions. Will the other two grants, because we have a C B D G, and then this L W?
C U.
Yes, but we have not applied to that one yet. Um, will the other two grants that we are working on go towards the eight-hundred-sixty-nine-thousand-dollar match that is listed in the resolution? And, um, Benny comes back, you can go up to the very top, and says, Brenda, yes, the one million-dollar C B D G grant and the one million L W C F grant would go towards the match. Hopefully, there won't be any local Spring City money on the project.
And if there is, we can still opt out, correct?
I, that's the question I have asked. Or we can lower the cost of the project.
Yeah. I, I want the trail built, I, I mean, I do, I, I just, I would like it better if it said, there won't be any local Spring City money spent on the project. That would've been the best way to get them.
I guess we can base it up on that.
Where it would have sounded a lot better. Hope it sound like y'all already agreed to, to some, one point, I was probably not.
But from that top thing, it does sound like if we do get both of those grants, it'll cover ours, hopefully.
But if you look at that, there's two million dollars, okay? That is eight-hundred-sixty-nine, about something. Sure about two million, if we are. Applying for Crosswood, probably applying for Campbell County, probably applying for, I think it's part of the ground, Campbell County, something where it's going off the plate.
What about the property owners that's going involved? It's just, just it, the city's gonna touch your city property. City's not touching private property, that's.
Trail running right by.
Huh?
You're gonna come through one of them, I know.
No, the city, the city don't own no property on your property. This, this grant is to do the city's part, back from around Nature Park, Veterans Park. That's to do trails on the city property. We ain't got no funding to be messing with your property, that's a whole nother ball of wax.
It shouldn't touch any private property at all. Unless they come to you and try to, to buy. I know what you're saying, it's gonna come by, you think it's coming across the creek there behind, I know it is. But that's where they projected it, right, that don't mean that's where they'll put it. Because they, they talked about going to the other side, that'd be great. Yeah, that, that, I mean, that's, everything's been explored, but building a bridge and going up, so.
And it's also been a plot that instead of going by their personal property, is going across the field where the, um, where the soccer field used to be at.
Yeah.
Soccer field is, making it halfway down through the middle of that and coming out on, that's T Street, isn't it?
Hillary Street.
Hillary. Hillary Street, and then going down and going around.
Like, to, by Holloway Park, down there to the creek and other.
And that way, they're not.
They don't have, you don't have to build private. Yeah, and there's a lot of trails like that, even on the Appalachian Trail, you'll, you'll cross main highways and walk main highways real wild where you done back off. I've never been on it. I've been on parts of it. I, I've been on parts of it. I don't wanna lie, but, uh.
Well, uh, I've got that. Uh, as far as it goes, I mean, I'm, I'm sure that they probably do what they can to avoid private property at all costs because it's a hassle.
But when they started, they worked on my, now, want to go down behind Howard's place there at the park and go up the creek and try to stay along the creek there. But I, I think because of some concerns, they, I, I, I think they kinda got away from that. But, I guess, a lot of places that you have trails, they will cross main roads and you, you may walk the main road for a little ways. And I, I've been on the Cumberland first, I've been on both, I've been on the Cumberland Trail a little bit, and I've been on that Appalachian Trail a little, off my, I know, I'm cracked, you'll tell your mom. Y'all be surprised what that boy done done.
I was gonna say, who forced you? Who was chasing you? No, no response.
He was chasing him, what he had on his mind at the time he was there.
Yeah, when I, it, it was, it, it started out three of us, and by the time we got to the top of Mount McCollin, it was me, the other two ran off and left me, those are ahead of me. And I wanted to quit so bad, but I did not, I went all the way to the top. Both of them was ten years younger than me, they, they're in a whole other shape, but not as damn good looking.
Again, this is a pre-application?
Yeah.
So it's not, this is to allow them to do the application, is that correct?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, let's move forward, resolution twenty-two-five dash ten for the, uh, pre-application for Town of Spring City Recreational Trails, Cumberland Trail Connector Project Phase One, twenty-two-five Appalachian Regional Commission Project, with whatever the numbers are, because is it the million and million, or the eight-hundred and, uh?
Our, our maximum is sixty-nine, that was the other grant, that is sort of the. I know we've been approved of C D, didn't we?
Yeah.
We modified it to L W.
C, yes.
Yeah, they modified that, yeah.
I'll second it.
Given a motion made by Commissioner Jenkins, seconded by Vice Mayor Bauer, to approve resolution number twenty-two-five dash ten, resolution for participating for the Town of Spring City Recreational Trails, Cumberland Trails Connector Project Phase One, twenty-two-five Appalachian Renew Commission Project. Any other discussion, question? Here none, seen none, roll call, please.
Mr. Bieber?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins?
Uh.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bauer?
Aye.
Mayor Law?
Aye. My left. Commissioner Jenkins, you got it.
I've got nothing, I, I went down and spoke with, uh, I think we had a good talk, uh, I hope everybody, we all gotta have a chance, and I think you'll have, if you got some good ideas. He, uh, he agreed to get a car with me and ride around, so I'm gonna come around and look at y'all's places, so y'all better plan on up, man.
And that's, Mr. Bauer?
Did you wanna say something, Brenda, about Monday?
I was wondering.
Okay. I was gonna say about that, I was wondering about Monday. Uh, Monday, we have our coffee social at City Hall, it's from eight-thirty to ten. Come by and let's have time to socialize and get to meet our new city manager and have coffee and, like, refresh. Egg, egg, in a coffee cup.
Go, please. I did.
I can't you tell.
No, you ain't setting them now, I'm waiting for you to all cook it up.
I, uh, all thing I'd like to say is I appreciate you, and participation and attendance. Uh, as you heard, the library is needing someone to assist in training for, uh, some upcoming projects. Uh, thank you, it'd be good for the city and citizens within the city. Again, thank you for your participation, and, uh, hopefully we can, uh, give our new city manager a little bit of grace time to get his feet wet, go book. Citizens, leave it, leave it.
Demolition on Labor Day weekend, two thousand twenty-four.
What, what was that we didn't hear?
That Labor Day Memorial Day.
Left Labor Day weekend, uh, two thousand twenty-four.
Aye.
Demolition on, uh, Labor Day weekend, uh, twenty twenty-four.
He has not completely cleaned it up. Reason why he's not completely cleaned it up, there were some concerned citizens that didn't want him to burn it.
Where's this at?
It's the old Perry Ferguson's property that's, uh, owned by Miss Dines, a bank, uh, part of the Smith Heritage here.
Okay.
And, uh, they hired an independent contractor to come in and demo it. Uh, there was concerned citizens that brought issues to it, and, uh, to concern some of their issues, it has not been forgotten about the rules and regulations that's going forward with demolition. Reason being, if you wanna know, there's another demolition project prior to getting taken place here in Spring City within the city limits. They contacted me personally, and not only did I talk with the contractor, I talked with both property owners and I described to them the techniques, the technical things that is gonna be put in writing so John Q. Pogway can place the eyes on it. Reason being, it's concerned by citizens, the things that we have in play, and me and the current building inspector, Rick Yanier, going through this, we want it to be divinely, to fit within codes and code standards out of the National Code Book. Being a rural town in a rural county, we can't compete with metro-type cities or cities of the size of, uh, looking at Athens and places like that. But in our city, we don't compete with them, but we compete with what the law says. One of the things I did tell them is, yes, they gotta hang a sign for forty-eight hours prior to starting demolition. Number two, they gotta contact the adjoining property owner to let them know exactly what's getting ready to transpire. Number three, at the end of the day, they will place a secure barrier around that property with caution tape, be it noticeable, it don't mean that they gotta build a wall or a barrier. Something to say with a sign that is visible, says no trespassing. Now, federal law will whip you all over the court because the neighbor's little boy cannot read, and he didn't know what do not trespassing mean, and he got over and got hurt. Property owners, he'll have accountable, okay? But we are taking proper protocols to make this adjustable for our citizens, for our community. But they are following proper protocols to do that, and I did inform them if anybody was caught on damn premises without a written letter of permission, our officers has authority to arrest them for criminal trespassing because it is a demolition site, the signs hanging, the yellow tape posted, and if you don't know no better than that, I'm sorry if you color blind, that can take me sound.
So, I, I guess I'm confused, yeah, so we're saying that it was done a year ago, but it's still not cleaned up?
He hadn't cleaned it up because his intentions was to burn it. He went through proper channels to get a hold of burn permits to do so. Community citizens that have health issues, afraid of poison ivy and all the other good conditions, and it was a concern. I personally went to the man and said, we, we can't burn it at this point in time. So it's still being demolished.
And we're trying to get everything in right. That way, when somebody comes to City Hall, even though they get their permit down there, I think you're trying to get it all in right, and that way, they got it at City Hall, and they go, this is what you have to read.
The city has.
This is what they gotta follow.
The city will have its own ordinance in, in our code book of ordinance because it's never come up before. Nobody's ever been able to bring the issues before the poll fund doing such. So, since it's arrived, we were going off of what this says the book, and we can be in compliance with that. Some people want it in A, B, C, D, Mayor of All, so we're working, do, do that, that way. City's covered, citizens can be happy, and our local contractors can go forth and do their due diligence, job of working. There is restrictions on it and so forth, if it's gonna be done in the zone where there's a church. If it's a Sunday, they may not show up till like two o'clock. Gotta be gone by five o'clock, so they got a three-hour window on Sunday, if any of them. Providing there's no activities going on around it, it cannot be done around the daycare or any facility like that. If it's around a daycare within two-hundred-and-fifty foot, there has to be a protective barrier of three foot. Little black orange fence goes around, I do that, that's all that's required by state federal laws. Supposed to deter you, people who are curious gonna cross it anyway.
It's the second demolition you talked about on Jackson?
Ma'am.
Was the second demolition you mentioned on Jackson?
The second demolition on Jackson was done without any issues whatsoever, you talking about the one right there about Little Bridge? That homeowner, the property owner took it upon himself to demolish it itself. Board by board, piece by piece, he finally got it down, I don't think he got it all cleaned up yet, but he, he done it himself to save money, cut costs to do it, so uh.
Do they still have to have permits and stuff?
Yes, they have to have permits to do it. That way, when they get a permit, that covers this thing that all utilities have been disconnected. Uh, the building inspector is supposed to go and inspect to make sure prior to the demolition start. Water sewer mains and stuff have been capped off, properly turned off, gas lines have been properly turned off and capped off. The only dangerous thing about a gas line is, gas company gonna tell you, we turn that little valve off at the end of that line, that's the end of the discussion. They will not come in and remove the lines because somebody's gonna pay. They have to dig that line from the house or no, they gonna dig it up out there on the road where it ties into the tee and put a cap on it right there and charge you an awesome amount of a price for about twenty minutes' job, and they gonna need to rest that pipe in the ground, that's your problem. That's how it operates with gas, but there's been a concern about places with natural gas. How's it dealt with, gas company comes in, they pull the meter off, they put a little karthy thing in the hole, and they out gone, they do not remove any piping, that's your piping. Your problem, your problem. And I understand the reason for leaving, somebody may come back in and reconnect. So if I, they lay a new line, because now they lay plastic, so look out. Uh, next we have on citizen's input is uh, Ms. Phillips Nixon.
Um, first of all, first of all, Don Gerald, Mr. Mayor, if I'm sorry about Tony, he was a real good man, looking at me. Um, but we're just wondering what you found out from Mr. Clark?
Own street, he is looking up some data for me. I told him I wanted something in writing, and matter of fact, he ended up putting it in. I needed some sort of that decorates that that had been named, and we gonna have to, if there's a paper trail tracking it back of why it got changed, we need to know.
We're talking about the street name, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and it's funny, um, there is a map, when you pull it up, uh, if you've seen it, I think you sent it to me. If you GPS, it has that name in there, so it is somewhere, it has been documented and recorded because it exists on GPS map.
Well, that's right, a little alley back up here on the back by uh, Mr. Gideon's property.
Yes.
Steve Evans. Steve Evans property, that still pops up, although.
It's a city street still, she wouldn't take the sign down because it's still a city street. It's, I don't know about you, I just know what he's talking about, because we, uh, all that.
He and I sat down and talked, and he started looking some trouble up, and he got busy with some other things, come in nine-one-one.
We were told, excuse me, we were told when we first presented this to the commission by the city manager that that was a city street, that they had it listed as Hillcrest Drive. And I questioned her later in the meeting, and she said, yes, it is a city street. How did it get erased?
I don't know, but that, that wasn't ever Hillcrest Drive, because where I live is Hillcrest Drive, and it's, it's not that.
Well, that's what she said, they had it as Hillcrest Drive.
Why would your name sign, why would your name street sign?
I have no idea, but like, happily it's on North Hillcrest, I live on South Hillcrest.
And the pool is on.
And they have had the poles on Hillcrest.
Well, maybe.
It's not north or south, it's just Hillcrest.
It's Hillcrest Drive, according to Mr. K.
Mine is South, South Hillcrest Drive, it is Drive. I don't know about North Hillcrest, did Drive also? Okay, but they, the pool, since they owned a lot all the way to Hillcrest, that's probably why that was called that, means why their address was on Hillcrest.
Their address is North Hillcrest.
Yeah, because they're on North Hillcrest.
Just Hillcrest Drive, that's what Mr. K. wrote in, Hillcrest Drive.
I don't see, I don't understand that, I don't understand how my end of the sta, of the street is South Hillcrest Drive. Had it is on North Hillcrest Drive, I mean, you can't have two, two streets with the same name.
It's not, it's not, it's plain.
That's different.
Three different rooms.
That's weird.
But no.
And it wasn't that, forty years ago, it was just Hillcrest Drive, it wasn't, it wasn't south, that guy changed.
Yeah.
That was forty years.
But now, you would mind, you didn't have to put south or north.
Now you do. Now you do. But even back then, forty years ago, it was just Hillcrest.
I've been there forty years.
I have too.
And so I don't, I mean, I, I don't see how it could have changed, because if, if somebody sends mail to just Hillcrest Drive my mail, it's probably been done off the other end of the street, so I, I don't care.
You gotta put south on there, so you're on south.
Yeah, you gotta put south, but if they just put Hillcrest Drive.
That's right, when they started being nine-one-one.
It goes back to no box.
Go back and look and see, when they started eight-nine, that, that's, thought it in the pool.
They destroyed everything.
I guarantee they did, that's, I mean, I, they.
It disappeared off of my records in the last year.
Yeah, and well, that's.
Who did that?
Yeah.
Well, some people still got them, because it's still popping up, you see, I mean.
But if it's not, if it's not.
They say now it's not a street.
Why did it have a street sign?
What, what had street sign?
Yeah, I got it.
She's got it, she got it from the sale. Yeah, that's just, I mean, Jill.
Well, there, there again, it goes back to, and, and nine-one-one ain't nobody, but it goes back when nine-one-one started getting established. Names on roads got changed, uh, big names changed. Uh, Old Stage Road is three oh two. If you call nine-one-one and you tell, they say, can you give me your location, I'm a so-and-so on Old Stage Road, where? They would have to ping you to know that you're on three oh two, because you, I'm on Old Stage Road, that's alright.
They didn't change any roads up there.
Ma'am.
And they didn't change any road names up there.
Well, now we'll.
Somehow, no, the road name got to be changed, and it had to be changed and approved over at the.
With it, nine-one-one go in effect, for Ray County, for Spring City.
Two thousand and seven.
It wasn't, you sure it wasn't before then?
Before that.
Nineteen ninety-three.
Nineteen ninety-three?
I'd say it, it's actually a while.
Hillcrest existed, because if it didn't, there would not have been a sign, and it would not be on the GPS map today, and it is, so.
Well, and like I say, the Town of Spring City, all of an access road, and an access road leads to a business. The pool is a business because it's Hammer Hill Pool Club.
LLC.
INC Inc., you know, so that's a business, an access road is a city street.
Well, we were told by the city manager at the time, it, it was a city street twice in the same meeting.
There's just been a lot of confusion.
Well, uh.
I know, but uh, Hill, Hillcrest, talking about Hillcrest.
And y'all fix it?
That's what I'm just saying.
But it's fixing.
It was called Hillcrest Road.
Well, that's what we're trying to.
So, I mean, that's, that's what I'm saying, though, over the years, there's been changes and uh, well, it's like if you try to, if you try to buy the water lines through the Town of Spring City. Because back years ago, one, that was just in the water.
The thing about it, no matter what. Or get it off map, it's on off map, it's on GPS, it's in on GPS.
You know what, it's always hope wrong, but this move up down.
It wasn't.
There's so little.
Easy fix.
That, that has been a lot of money on that property.
So.
So why, wasting this every day?
He sued the, the county over that, for every bad information.
Exactly.
Been a very nice subdivision, and it used to be small enough, as a matter of fact.
It is.
Still is.
We can just be cautious, so we, we didn't know, but um, they, a, a, a double wide could allow in there and it just doesn't belong in our eyes, and that's why. Yes, it's, yeah, it's a city street, that double wide is out of, uh, it's not meeting these segments.
You know, Phillip, a lot of things, if you drive around Kimball, I've lived there four years, cookies lived there four years. If you drive around, a lot of things have changed during that time that I had lived there. You've got, and I'm not saying this is right or wrong or in between, but you've got uh, canopy carports, metal canopy carports. Uh, instead, I had several the other day when I was driving around. You've got portable storage buildings, you didn't used to have all that. There's, I mean, time, time has changed, right?
Yeah. I ain't saying that it has to be comparable to the other houses in that subdivision, and there's, and there's nothing comparable about it.
Well, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about things. But there's changes in general on Kimball Hill, and you know, things that, that would never have been considered at the time I moved to Kimball Hill are now commonplace, I'll just put it this way.
That's a fair enough.
I'm not saying anything about the trailer, I'm just saying that, that things change and time changes.
Well, and that's the thing, but there's, there's, there's nobody living in that trailer, right? I know the last time, the last time that I saw.
Go ahead and buy it.
It was flat.
Can't believe y'all done it that, man. Y'all, you need all my money, and you couldn't even give me your money. Man, you mean it. I was in trouble this morning, because I seen her at the bank, she started all that, I don't know.
Give me the social, I'll make time, we'll talk, okay?
Yeah.
Take your hair.
If you come to the social one day, we'll make time and we'll talk. And I'll try to.
I'm not.
Uh, we're just cutting off. We don't, we don't want this long.
Hi.
We want to know that.
Do you need a letter? Sit down, shut up.
We ain't getting no more letters.
No, we're all without any more.
You're the one that said.
I was not the one that said. Yeah, well, somebody forced my name, I've been booked, I would have booked my name, well, no, that crap.
I'm just asking why were we talking city street in, in the year of, as every time we'd come up with a, with a complaint against it, the brothers would shine.
Yeah, everything.
We kept moving the goalposts. Don't disagree with it.
Bolin Chubbings, Bolin.
We came up that it was a corner street, then, yeah, that street disappeared.
It's a great thing.
If he's working on it, if he's working on it, I, I thank you. Now you got it, now you got it, he said, he's talking to you at the social, he makes time for some.
Somebody has just, somewhere knows something slipped through the cracks. And, and it, it makes it twice as hard to know that something might get slipped through the cracks and then do it correctly or to make a correction. I'm telling you what kind of red tape we have to go through to make a correction system. It, it, it deserves a respectable, and.
Crack and solution.
But speaking of cracks, that.
So not only was Mr. Jenkins trying to sell you a house, a crack house. A crack house.
I live in the floodplain, man, I don't get a crack. And I'm right down the road from there, so, you know, it's pretty bad when you get a phone call, why you have to try to save everybody else's property, some message, man, your car's gone. It literally was gone, left, took a, uh, anybody got anything?
It's a great day, it's great city.
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, when you go uh, Tennessee Street, I noticed there's a lot of empty street signs now.
I know, they just.
Well, well, well.
Phillips go.
Battery-powered tubes are great in their own respect, but you know, when they go to the pawn shops and they purchase these things for a little to nothing, and then they get out here and start, because your road signs are not like they used to be. Most times, they just got one three-sixteenth screw going through it with a nut on the other side with a, just the, the old cheap black and decked or eighteen bolt drill. You pop them things out and be gone before you can sneeze real good and knock a snort. But that's what's happening to them, people are stealing them. I've got road signs in the bed of my truck that the sheriff's department has come and skated from two of them houses.
They're putting them out.
They're not getting them out of bed in the truck, now they're going to a piece of wood right now, but I have five road signs that would have been to directions to parks. And one sign, I didn't, you know, it's a sign.
That's just good, we, they stole them and make stand, uh, hunting stand, uh, they don't make any kids, I didn't ever steal any, I didn't, I was scared.
But uh, that, that's what happens to a lot of them, and I didn't notice that, where you look at somewhere on road signs, you know, it's, uh, cheap is showing, it's played the sticker field off. And they like the good metal ones that everybody bought, at least in this, somewhere I knew it, uh, whole letter, none of them are, killing them.
Yeah, the reason that Tennessee goes missing is because it's real popular and it's football season.
Well, it's Mahogany Street, I, I think Spooky Hollow is gone, there's a few more back in there, I'll drive around now. It is Halloween time, so that probably was.
What does nine-one-one do with that street sign?
Use GPS.
They, they call, they said using GPS, but if you ever listen to them on the radio live, go, this is a disaster. Now, I saw something in my marital travels in the community, I love their markers for addresses. It is concrete about yay wide, wider than this, with big numbers, the numbers is tall as this right here. But I, I thought, man, you're offside, really, hit one of them bad boys, you, you ain't worry about property damage, you just told me, you'll be here for about, they're about twenty-four, thirty inches wide and about yay tall.
They moved on the mail property too, I reckon, going out to.
Toaster ain't got demolition the other night, but. I, I am dead.
They were really working on it last night.
I do have, what's the same time it's going on? I do have one question about the water lines on New Lake Road. Uh, and like, um, if you hear that some crazy lady showed her rear end, you'll know that it was me, because if I can't see to pull out on New Lake for girls, because somebody has seen it necessary to park their track hoe all the way over. Um, I tried to catch them yesterday, but left. Um, there's a lot of older people that drive that direction that may not be able to see. I know that I've got several neighbors down the road that take that way versus shooting over Kimball Hill, so um. So, um, just, do we have an idea?
No, but I, I will suggest to, to Roger to have an officer speak with him, ask him, and, and folks, this is contracted everywhere. If you drove around the county, the spectrum...
Spectrum was awful.
You around the corner on Black Road, hate the ladder hanging about six inches across, yellow.
Oh, yeah, they had, they had a ladder feeding us today.
Three old scrap to a pole over here.
Yes.
But the barbed wire anchored in, in the road and, uh, it's a scary thing, but they, they don't have nobody watching or flying.
No, no.
They, they, I couldn't work for nobody, didn't have somebody call me, make some below call. I go look around here hard just for a joke, stick a stick, made the truck swept tailgate, nobody can catch that ladder, he just...
Well, there's other now where they were working, there was no way of us getting out of Mahogany Street, Sleepy Hollow, they had run the noise closed in Tennessee Street. And so I got out of my car and I asked my sidecar doctor for a minute, Cleveland, I forgot to get to, he said it'd be about forty-five minutes. Okay, I have to be there in an hour.
Well, this is the water line company.
Yeah, and they were just parked, I mean, they weren't working at that point, but they were just parked in the road, all the workers' vehicles was just down on both sides of the road.
They were just sitting there with a motor?
I had, I got out, there was only one guy there, I got out, I think, "Can you pass for me to move their car?" He said, "It has to be forty-five minutes."
Call City Hall, have officers down there, don't, don't hesitate to call City Hall, whatever you need to do.
Yeah, they have...
Hopefully they're done working that is right now.
They had rules parked yes, or rules blocked yesterday, um...
And then they had Tennessee blocked too, so I ended up having to shoot it across Mahogany, it was the only way.
Yeah, move them, move them, you can move them.
Yeah, we can get officers up there to help, we get direction and they ought to have signage.
Absolutely.
They should still park around the side of the road around there.
They got Jerry Nice.
They got a park over there, they, they, they park there, boy, that's cool. I don't want to do that, man.
Yeah, the signs, the signs is posted, I'll just tell Roger, Tony Heisman's on them in time to catch, but I don't ask him what he's riding ticket. I'm leaving, I saw it too late, lots of riding ticket. They're going one way to scan a cab. Sorry to be that rude, but it's just, just the rules. Signs has been posted, the county's being gracious enough to make sure it's not posted. It's a hazard. I jumped up now in the song of Dad's song about East Jackson, even about the school traffic. They try to tell them, they need to fix the office, but I, I think we double up all the way around that part. It ain't gonna hurt us to put a sign that says, "Road closed from two o'clock to three o'clock." That'll have people come get the kids because there's gonna be something bad happen on tow string. You're gonna have construction trucks coming in, town concrete truck, and then you got a ambulance trying to get by and to tell them that the cars that picks up the kids is at Hillcrest.
Yep.
That's a bad omen all the way around, they gonna be all through Howard, Jordan, everywhere else, because you know how our ambulance got hit. Especially far truck, they come around there, they're trying to go around, their cars go out tow string, don't know whether the thing's coming or not. You get, it's a, it's dangerous, and the school don't fertilize it, but they can be allowed. Because they, they can't block a, a, a city street that's has dual public access. I mean, you gotta go out tow string to a community, come out tow string to a community. Road shouldn't be blocked under the school trap.
In that way, Black County, they do close certain roads for like a fifteen, forty minute period to pick up.
A sign posted to keep them from coming across, um, New Lake, you go by the school at a certain time.
Yes.
That way it's accessible to come in and out, but you got parents that go in down there and some of them will line up at one...
One o'clock.
One, not that they've been going earlier.
Sitting down there and, uh, we're, I'm gonna get with, uh, Mr. Cook, and we're gonna come out with a re, a resource for that. Uh, we'll get a sign or something posted. We'll, we'll make it happen, that way we can double up the traffic, get them all into Cubby Sack. If you're going to the park tomorrow, you should be already in there, don't get mad if you was out for fifteen minutes and the line gets iron blocked in.
Yeah.
Uh, we can post a sign that says, "Due to school safety, the park's gonna be closed from this time to that time."
Yeah, I think if we start sharing that on social, once, once you have a plan and we can start sharing that out and get a hold of these walkers, I mean, my lord, we've got the nature park. They can go, they can swap parks if they want to go through the week.
You know as well as I do. Break up some of my routines, just like... He's not got a sign there. And now, again, people, I, I appreciate you, your participation in your input. We are smiling, praying that we are going forward into the horizon. We may not be the greatest little town in Spring City, but we can be one of the best in Spring, in Tennessee. We'll make it happen, make it work. Thank you.